Hello, everyone. Thank you so much, Zach. I appreciate that. As he said, my name is Valli. I'm co-president of the League of Women Voters and I am the one who has done all the logistical work along with TC Media and the library. We really appreciate all of you coming. I'm going to kind of explain the format today. You are not able to see it from the audience perspective, but the candidates do have this large timer that's right here. Candidates, that timer will turn yellow when you have 15 seconds left and there will be a stop sign that is in red. Similar, all of you were at the primary forum, so it's the same timer. Please stop when the stop sign says, so maybe keep that five-second mark in your brain. My moderator will politely interrupt you when it says "stop." For the questions, we are -- I'm seeing that a lot of people have already done questions. Thank you so much. You are still able to turn in questions during the event, so if one of their answers produces another question, you can do another question. We have a lot of note cards. We are not going to run out tonight. If you need -- if you have a question to turn in, just raise it and my greeters will come and grab it from you. And then if you need a new note card, just raise your hand as well. We do ask that you use one note card per question, just to help our question consolidators and our moderator read them. Let's see, I will look at my notes to make sure I'm not forgetting anything. The guidelines for the questions are just be clear and specific as possible. Please try to keep them short. Make sure they are relevant to the school board, so don't be asking questions about maybe car insurance. That would be more of like the tax commissioner. So just make sure that you're asking questions that's relevant to the school board and not any other positions. Also make sure that they are directed to all candidates, so you cannot single out one of the candidates for a question. If you do, we will either direct it to all candidates or we will not ask it. This is being livestreamed tonight, so the link is -- will be available on the League of Women Voters website and this can be passed around. Not everyone is obviously here tonight and we do want as many people to be able to access this as possible. Other than that, we have kind of gone over all the ground rules today. This is just another reminder to silence your cellphones so we don't get disrupted. Our moderator tonight is Toni Crawford and she will go ahead and introduce the candidates to you and also our timer. Yes, we will have our greeters come grab them. Do you want me to put it right there?
I will. Tonight, we are joined by Renee Fullerton and Ryan Smith, running for Position Three, and Emily Lettigie and Gilbert Lamont, running for Position Five. According to their website, the Olympia School District Board of Directors is comprised of five citizens elected to represent the community in setting district goals and policies, adopting the budget, placing tax levies and bond issues on the ballot, hiring personnel including the superintendent, and providing the necessary facilities for the education of our community's youth. As we turn to the questions, we ask that the audience to please hold all applause until the end of the forum to ensure that we can get through as many questions as possible. We'll start out this evening by asking each candidate why they are running for the Olympia School Board and what their goals and priorities are. We will start with Renee. Renee Fullerton.
All right, well, hello, everyone, and thank you for spending your Wednesday evening with us. I'm Renee Fullerton and I am a candidate for District Three for the Olympia School Board of Directors. And fundamentally, my reason for doing this is I'm a mom. I'm a mom of two kids educated in the Olympia School District since kindergarten. And it has been a great ride for us, but it hasn't always been an easy ride. I started going to school board meetings September a year ago. I was reading the local newspaper. I just couldn't get a good sense about what was going on with my school board. And so if you want to understand something, you have to go to the source and you have to make an investment and spend the time so you can understand what's going on. And so that's what I did. And as part of doing that, I got invested in the school board itself. These positions matter a lot for the functioning of our local community. Having a faculty of school board is very important. And my last thing is I think there's a lot we could build on for workforce development. That's my background. I'm very passionate about connecting our students with our employers, so they go into good wage jobs.
That's perfect. All right, stop. This is really -- yep, great. My name is Ryan Smith and I'm running for school board because I too am a parent. I'm a dad of four kids. I grew up in Olympia, graduated from Olympia High School, and so I've been a lifelong enjoyer of Olympia Public Schools. And we moved back here to raise our kids. All four of our kids, two of them graduated, two of them going through. My mother-in-law, my father-in-law, both schoolteachers in the Olympia School District. I was a teacher in the Olympia School District. We are -- love the district, we love public education, we love what it provides. And as we've all seen the last few years, Olympia School Districts have began to decline in several areas, in enrollment and budget issues. They say in the website, and if you look at the District Improvement Plan, it talks about the vision, the vision of promoting trust and growth and achievement, and we're not doing those things well. We've lost trust in the community as a school board. We are declining in enrollment and attendance and we are seeing our test scores continue to slip. And so I want to help bring back trust.
All right, this is my turn. This is up. Hi, my name is Gilbert Lamont. Thank you all for being here this evening. I'm also a parent in the district. I have two smaller children that go to elementary school. I'm a data analyst by trade. My wife is an educator. I'm a military veteran and public service is a big part of my identity and how I like to contribute to society. And I'm running for school board because I think I can help some of the problems that the school board seems to be having. With the budget issues as they are, my background in data analytics can help find where we're succeeding and where we could be spending less or more based off of those results. And I'm not the best at being a politician or public speaker, so that's all I have. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name's Emily Lettigie and I'm running for District Five. And I'm a parent of a son who goes to McLean. He's in third grade. And I'm also an attorney. I'm a prosecutor here in our community, so public service is near and dear to my heart. But I'm also an advocate. I've been an advocate for education for quite some time, especially for special needs and for special education. I do think education is at the heart of everything throughout our lives. I also want to be able to bring the tools and resources for our students, to meet them where they're at, to allow them to truly thrive, not only in the classroom, but also in the community when they're full humans. My partner and I, we chose Olympia specifically for the schools. She and I were very pleased with the outcomes that we have seen through our son's schooling. And so I really just want to bring all of the positive things that we've seen and also build on the things that I think that Olympia School Districts can finish doing.
Okay, we do have some questions from the audience. The way this works is that each candidate will get an opportunity to be the first one to answer the question and then we'll go down the line. And the first question is, and we're starting with you, Renee. What strategies do you favor for supporting and retaining teachers and other school staff?
Sure, so workforce retention is a huge need right now. And I think we see that -- do we need to adjust the sound? Okay. Workforce retention is a huge need across a lot of sectors right now. It's not just education, it's in our healthcare professions, it's a lot of different places. People are feeling the impact of burnout of all the demands that are placed upon them. And sadly, unfortunately, with Olympia having to do kind of more, deal with kids that are having some extreme challenges, while resources have continued to decline over the last couple years. I would love to look into a climate survey to see how our educators are doing and also be looking for opportunities that we can help change the culture so that teachers are feeling supported, and paraeducators, and all of our staff. I have a background and experience with learning collaboratives, which in talking to some of the teachers in our school districts seemed like it would really help to bring together people who are working in somewhat siloed schools right now. We can share expertise, we can connect professionals with each other and start to build more of a team-based culture where we're leaning into the strengths that are already within our school buildings.
Great. Yeah, so I -- a couple of thoughts right off the top of my head. Of course, you want to be a district that provides competitive wages that is going to attract the best teachers to come and be a part of our school district. And we, I think, want to make sure we're looking at that closely in each contract year. But the biggest thing for me is always culture. And I'm a business owner and been owns some businesses in the area for 20 years. And the idea of culture is the most important thing. And I think that's the case in anything, whether it's your home or your school or your workplace. And there's a leadership I shared with another podcast or forum that he says that culture eats strategy for breakfast. And we want to try to create the best culture, because you could have an amazing strategy in a horrible culture and people will not thrive in that. So how do you create a culture in your school in which teachers thrive in? And one of the ways you do that is you try to continue to provide the most support you can for each teacher.
Well, the obvious answer is compensation, but that's not the whole answer. It's also, as my two previous speakers have mentioned, it is about -- I'm not good, sorry. It is about establishing a culture where they feel respected and they feel valued. And further into that is professional note, making sure that they are being provided with quality professional development that gives them growth in knowledge and cross-experience with other teachers. Thank you.
So I think one of the ways to work on the retention is to really focus on the humans, and that's focusing on the teachers, the educators, the staff, paraeducators, everyone involved helping to educate our students and our children. Also to being able to look at the budget and really focus on ways we could be more efficient and to reallocate some of the funds to help get resources, to help the teachers and the staff and the educators so that the schools can truly thrive. And also to ask what they need. I believe one of the other candidates talked about doing some surveys. I think that's important to really go to the source and ask what our staff and our students and employees need and that we can look at where we can pull the money from to help address those concerns, so we're going straight to the source.
Okay, our next question, we will start with Ryan. And it is, "To what extent should school boards be involved in decisions over curriculum and which books should be allowed in school libraries?" Oh, and excuse me, by the way, if you need me to repeat the question at any time, I'm happy to do so.
Yes, if I understood the question correctly, it's the role of school boards overseeing curriculum and what books should be allowed in libraries. So quickly, in less than a minute, I would say that the role of the school board is to allow the experts to be the experts. I mean, teachers are trained, they have master's degrees, we have development directors that work in the district. And so we want to leave the expertise to those that are trained and we would be certainly a voice of consultation, but we want to make sure that we are not stepping into areas that are not ours to step into, that we stay in our own lane and do the best job of encouraging and supporting the teachers and facilitating conversation with them. With regards to libraries, I think age appropriateness is always important, especially in elementary education. I'm an elementary ed teacher and certainly age appropriateness is critical to think about when you're talking about books in the library.
I agree with Ryan. We've got to trust our educators. They are the professionals, they are trained, they are the ones that know best in situations around curriculum. And speaking to libraries as well, I trust our librarians in our school districts. They know what is best and age appropriate, they know which books should be available. And in any manner of curriculum or literature choice, I would default to the educators in our system.
I do agree that we should be focusing on what our experts have to say, the teachers, the librarian teachers, and those who have the knowledge and expertise in this area for -- we're just switching to -- okay. Knowledge and expertise in the curriculum, but also the school board does have a role to oversee that curriculum meets the policies and the standards in the state of Washington. So I do think it's an important note to have the school board overseeing it at some point because that is part of what our role is. I do believe that books should be age appropriate, but I don't think that books should be -- I think that books should be age appropriate and that all books should be accessible because I do, again, think that knowledge is power and having the knowledge to know things of the past and potentially innovation, things like that are very important. So I do think that books should be accessible to everyone.
The responsibility to be the place where a parent can raise a concern about a particular IAMN curriculum, which I've done myself as a parent when we had a curriculum that was quite aged and it was not accurately portraying Native American populations as we would respectfully want them to be portrayed. And so I brought that forward to the school board for discussion and consideration and public comment, and ultimately that curriculum is no longer being used. I think that's a key function for the school board, to be making sure there is an avenue for parents to bring forward concerns. As part of running for office, I've actually learned that we now have statute regarding concerns about books that the legislature has raised. And so now there is actually a process by which a parent of a student in the district can bring forward a concern about the book. The law lays out the process and then, of course, it ultimately comes to the school board if it cannot be resolved at the lowest levels of decision-making, which is, of course, at the school itself where the question is made.
I'm actually going to have Gilbert re-answer that, if you don't mind, because his mic was not working. Is that okay?
Can you repeat the question?
To what extent should school boards be involved in decisions over curriculum and which books should be allowed in school libraries?
Okay, I will go back to my previous answer that you all heard, but I guess online didn't, is that I would default to the educators. And I'm going to try not to change my answer too much on all of these other awesome answers that came up that touched on things I did not. So it is my opinion that we trust the professionals in this, we trust the educators, and I hope that's enough to recover my answer.
Okay, Gilbert, you get to answer for this next question first. How do you understand the relationship between the board and the district administration?
It's my understanding that the board acts more of the legislative body and the district is more of the executive, where we help set policy and tone, but we're not going in and telling teachers how to do or dictating curriculum for that matter.
So that's a very accurate answer. At its fundamental basis, the school board helps enact the policies and helps to look at how to fulfill those policies while the superintendent or the district at a whole is more of like the executive and makes those bigger decisions. But overall, the school board and the superintendent and the administrators, they work hand-in-hand in tandem. And there are ways to address dissonance between the two bodies, for lack of a better word. But overall, they are to work in tandem to help really have the students thrive.
So I would agree. The things that I would add, as a school board, of course, we ultimately have the responsibility of hiring the superintendent and deciding whether to retain the superintendent, based on whether we find that superintendent is carrying out the policies and sort of the larger vision and plan that has been developed by the school board. Our job is not to micromanage, not to get involved into day-to-day decisions that are being made within any individual school or any individual circumstance. We really sit at this higher level where we need to be managing our relationship with the superintendent while he manages his cabinet and looks to the day-to-day functioning of the district.
Yeah, I don't think I'd add anything new. We all would agree that the superintendent has the day-to-day responsibilities. We would be, as a board, working on oversight and annual evaluation, all the things that were said as well. The only thing I'd add is I want to make sure, I think it'd be critical for us to make sure we have good relationships with the district administration, that we're listening and we're asking them how they're doing and we're connecting on a regular basis, because people matter far more than our programs. And we want to make sure that we are caring well for our people so that our administration can care well for our teachers and our teachers can care well for our kids. And so relationships are the key to every connection and partnership that we have and would want to make sure that we do that really well.
This question will be begun with Emily. And that is, "What approaches would you take to balance a budget deficit or shortfall?"
So I think one of the things that I would want to do first is to really look at the budget and where the money is going to currently. I think that is always the goal with a budget. And look at where we can either find additional funds, but also to look at how we can reallocate the money and put it to more useful uses and more efficient uses. I also think looking at other types of funding or levies or other ways, grants, that we can really drum up money to help support the programs and resources and tools that we want for our students to thrive. So ultimately, I would want to first look at the budget, where the money is going, and how can we be more efficient with the money that we already have? And then take that next step and look outside of the current money that we have and see if we can get funding from other places and other ways to help support our students and really meet them where they're at.
Back down the road. So honestly, we all know, this has been the situation with the Olympia School District for the last couple of years. It's been a couple of recent years of watching this play out in front of our school board as the superintendent has to bring forward suggested cuts as our student enrollments continue to climb. And of course, with the dollars tied directly to student enrollment, these things are pretty inextricably linked. In watching how it has been done, I think there are some good pieces and I think there are some additional ways we could improve this process. A lot of it's done via surveys. Ryan was joking about me, about wanting to do more surveys. And those can tell you some things, but I think we also miss important opinions when we rely just on electronically distributed surveys. I think we're also missing some student voice, in particularly doing more focus group-based discussions with our students themselves, those most impacted. What are they valuing about their education? And I think overall, we need to look for a long-term plan that is sustainable year after year for how we're going to do things potentially differently than we have in previous years.
I think a few thoughts on this. Right off the top, I would say, what's the low-hanging fruit? What are the things that, you know, as a business owner, I look at to say, what are we not needing anymore? And I think you would do the same thing in the school district level. What are the administrative costs that we're spending that we are not getting the highest and best use for or the most use for our kids? The same with our programs, which programs are not flourishing and reaching the maximum amount of students and having highest and best use. But two things that came to mind right away is I'm a big proponent of best practices. What are districts doing? What are businesses doing that are the best practices? So I get together with a group of business owners, we look at each other's profit and loss statements, we say, hey, why are you spending money on this? And I think it'd be great to be transparent with other districts and go, and how are you flourishing like you are? And lastly, just rebuilding trust. If we don't rebuild trust in the community, we'll continue to see the decline of enrollment in the next several years and we'll continue to see a huge deficit in our budget because of declining enrollment.
I believe in impact over intent. So it's similar to a statement to what the other candidates have said, is that we need to look into where we're spending our money and where it's being effective for the students. We need to make sure that we're getting the outcomes that we desire so the students are growing. And now I'm blinking. I think that's all I have. Thank you.
We'll start this next question with Ryan. Are we back to you? Okay, sorry, I got out of whack there. "How will you contribute to the board's leadership if and when they consider school closures in the future?"
So that is a really tough change management process, right? When a community has to look at the way things have been for a long time and start to consider and reimagine together what those things might look like differently in the future. I think a lot of us are kind of sitting up here probably because we had a school closure process that didn't go well from a change management perspective. I think that this is something in particular that, as Ryan said, you know, we have a lot of work to do to recover trust and that is probably the starting ground and the leadership piece that we would bring forward. And so getting out there and making sure people have the ability to interact with the board members, make sure that when people email that they're getting responses, it may not be from every board member, but at least someone is writing back so that you get this closed-loop sense, this sense that there's actually a conversation and that you're not just sending your thoughts kind of into the electronic void that's out there. I think we also need to create opportunities for board members to talk with people in the community outside board meetings, which are created for a really formal purpose.
Yeah, a few things that come to mind. I think, of course, I think all of us would say this should be the last conversation of school closure to happen. If and when that were to be the case, I think you'd want to do a lot of work beforehand, even as there have been conversations around reboundering and looking at population in those communities before you do it. But there's a leadership principle that says people tend to support what they help to create. And if we can get the community to make sure that they feel like they're a part of this process, they're creating this process, they're going to be way more apt to support the thing that they create. And the last thing is, when I first began this process, I met with Frank Wilson, who was a longtime school board member, and he, his kids were part of the school closure of John Rogers that had to then transfer to Roosevelt. And so through that process, he learned a lot. It might be a reality of our community, but we certainly should make sure it's the last ditch effort in trying to help our budget.
I think it comes down to trust. I know the current school board has damaged a lot of trust in the process they went about trying to close schools previously. It was rather opaque. The community was not involved in the decision-making process as much as they thought they should be. And I believe that in fixing that, we need to move forward and have more community engagement, similar to what Renee said. And I know I've gotten smirks about subcommittees, but maybe forming a subcommittee in the board to be able to go out there and interact more with the parents and the concerned parties in the school district to get more of that opinion. Be more transparent, be more open, have those conversations so it doesn't seem so rigid like the school board meetings can be and that people can be heard and we can get better ideas into how we would go about doing this. Thank you.
So I think we need to focus on the trust and transparency. A lot of the concerns that I've heard is that members of the community, specifically parents, felt that the original school closure conversation excluded them. They were not being heard and I'm a huge proponent in listening to understand rather than to react. It sounded like, from all of the conversations that I had been a part of, that the school board reacted very quickly to try to solve the budget crisis. And I think trying to really listen to individuals and treat them as humans is really important. I also think that having a more informal way for the board to meet with people of the community, potentially having school board meetings at other schools, other locations to really allow access or true access. The board meetings are very formal and it can feel kind of clunky to the public, but also having some other informal way of allowing the board members to be accessible so that we're really trying to hear from as many people as possible to make informed decisions.
This question is for Ryan. And to start with, "Do you believe the Olympia School Board should speak with one voice or not at all? Can you support a board decision that you did not vote in favor of?"
So I would say, so should the school board speak with one voice or not at all? I disagree with that 100%. And I think it's been sad to watch the school board just be unanimous, continually without any dissent, or somebody saying, hey, are we sure that this is going to be the best option for our community? And so things have just gotten pushed through in ways that I think have actually been hurtful to our community, some of the things that's lost trust. But if we aren't able to disagree and we're not able to come up with the best solution possible through that disagreement, I mean, if you are married for any length of time, you know that some of your conflict and the resolution that comes from that creates some of the best parts of your marriage or any friendship, for that matter. And we grow most when we're in, when we have some tensions to work through. If it did get passed, I certainly would work with all those. I have a great relationship with Matt Grant. We disagree on a lot of things and we've been able to have a great relationship for many years, so I see that happening as well.
I think one aspect the board can improve on is that, like Ryan was saying, discourse. There does not seem to be a lot of discourse between board members at the meetings. At the end of the day, they do speak with one voice because each board member is only 20% of the board. They vote on it and they would have to speak with one voice at the end and you would have to potentially be okay with a decision you did not agree with. But I do think the current board has not had a lot of that open discussion. They're not talking to each other at the meetings, so who knows when they're talking with each other or if they are, and then they just are of the same mind. But it's important to have that discourse, while also you will have to accept if you are one and the other are four, that's the answer. The board the answer. The board is five people that vote. Thank you.
So ultimately, the board has to have a majority vote, whether that is three to two or four to one, however the math works out. The majority, whatever issue is being discussed, has to be passed with a majority. But ultimately, those in the minority would have, I would hope, have the courage to speak up. I believe that speaking against a policy, if that's something you truly believe in, is very admirable. Speaking up, standing up for what you believe in is very important to me. So I believe that if there was something that I didn't agree with, I would have those tough conversations with my fellow board members. I would be able to have those conversations and fully support what I believe. That doesn't mean my mind can't be changed either, but I would want to be able to voice my opinions and have a tough conversation, and I would hope that the other board members feel the same way. Ultimately, my job has given me the expertise to do that, but I would hope that that is something that I can bring to the board.
Disagreement is uncomfortable for a lot of people, and that in particular has struck me. I'm not a Washington native. I moved here in 2012. And, no, 2011, actually, the state. And watching how policy gets made in the state, and sometimes important thoughts or questions or concerns are not brought forward publicly, things are killed off in back rooms. And I think that's a really bad way of going forward because it doesn't give everyone a good sense of what's actually going on. You don't get a chance to have a thoughtful discussion and positive or negative disagreement about a topic if you're not even willing to bring concerns forward into a room. I think ultimately that a minority does need to support the decision that's made by a board, and if I were part of a minority at that point, I agree. But I keep an eye out for down the road. You look for how implementation of that decision has been handled, and if there's an opportunity to revisit.
This next question will start with Emily. With Gilbert. Oh, gosh, you guys, I'm sorry. I need a better chart, I guess. What would you propose to improve student literacy and reading comprehension?
You sure you don't want to take this one, Emily?
Go for it.
I mean, as I said before, I would default to educators. So I would go and speak with our librarians and speak with the subject matter experts on the topic to develop any kind of plan to help improve that outcome. And I probably should have talked slower.
It's okay, I'll go second. So I think to improve literacy and reading comprehension, we really need to look at what is working and what's not working. I think that one of the main things I would be focused on is to really look at how students learn as well as listen to the experts, but listen to how this, and look at how the students really thrive in their reading and in their comprehension, what works for them. Maybe reading a chapter book at this point in a sitting position is not good. Maybe sitting on a bouncy ball chair is more beneficial for them to focus on that reading. Are there other tools and resources that we can help encourage the reading and literacy? Also, I would like to look at more reading groups or have volunteers come in, whether that be myself, or other parents, or other just professionals in the community to help have those reading buddies. I think that would be really good. It also allows students to see other people reading, and it's really encouraging. So I'd want to start there.
McLean parents, you didn't bring up Ufly. So I think we need to look for the bright spots in the district. I am not an educator myself, so I mean, I will go along with the line that my colleagues have set around looking to the teachers who are experts, but also look to, do we see things that are working well? We have different curriculums being used in different schools. What are the outcomes looking like for those students? And is there one that is outperforming the others? And we should be look to be spreading that across the district. I think there are some longtime tools that I, speaking as a parent, would like revisited. And one of those that comes to mind is AR testing, or accelerated reader testing, which if you're not familiar, is a read a book, take a quiz, get the points tool that's used within the elementary schools. And for my kids at least, it's been very unmotivating. It's kind of that punished by rewards thing where they're trying to gamify, how do you get the points? Or if the book's not getting points, then you don't even want to read it. And it's like, what are we even here to do, folks? I mean, we want them to love reading.
So I'm an elementary education teacher, and that was my training. And so early intervention would be the key for me. Are kids able to read by third grade? Do they have the skills that are the foundational building blocks to begin to read? And I think if they don't, then we don't just push kids through and on as we have been doing in many ways in the last several years. Just they're not able to comprehend a certain thing, and we just say, hey, maybe next year we'll get it. And have a conversation with partnership with the parent to say, do you think this is best for your kid if they can't read by the third grade, to just push them through onto the next, begin at that early level to get foundational reading blocks in place. The other thing is, again, back to my conversation around best practices, why are there other states that are improving in these areas? How are they doing a better job in reading comprehension and reading literacy in all age groups? And so looking at best practices, but really, again, double down on early childhood education.
Emily, I believe. How should the district handle children and families moving to Olympia from other countries and cultures and languages?
I think first and foremost, the school district should welcome them with open arms and treat them as the humans that they are, and to allow those families and students to have access to resources that can help them be beneficial, not only in school but outside of school. There are a lot of great cultural things here in Olympia, and I think maybe not necessarily having partnerships, but having a nod to certain places that are able to help support those families that may be looking for other community, not just in the school, but outside in the community as well. And to be able to allow those students to have, and families to have, the access to that, and to also allow students to feel safe in the school, being who they truly are, and to have some assistance in school as well for things that they might not necessarily know they need, but start asking if there are things that can be addressed.
I'm actually going to ask if you could read the question to me again. I think I missed part of it.
How should the district handle children and families moving to Olympia from other countries and cultures, different languages?
I think children and families from other cultures and languages offer both an amazing opportunity to diversify our local school district, but also bring some really practical concerns for having those children, integrating them effectively into the classroom environment. I know that we have teachers that are specialists that work with our multilingual students as they come on board and learn English. I think we also need to be thinking about how we're supporting teachers in the classroom, because those specialists aren't necessarily there very much at all. They're split very much between all the different elementary schools where they serve students. So we need to be checking in with our classroom teachers who are with those students day in and day out. Do they have the adaptive technology that they need to be able to communicate effectively with these students? Are there microphone assists? Are there earpieces? Are there translation devices that would help? Also, when we need to send things home, are we making sure those languages are appropriate? Are we translating things as they should be translated? Anything that needs to be home, needs to go home, should be made available in the language that the parents can understand?
Yeah, I would agree with all that. And grateful for the ways in which we're already doing that in our district and continuing to provide ways for that to grow as we see a growing immigrant population in our community. But the number one thing that came right away to mind was more volunteers. I've pastored two churches in the community. We work with a great organization called World Relief, where families who come and seek refuge here in the community would partner with families. And so they'd each have a partner family to help them understand where a grocery store is and where the schools are. And so what are the ways in which we can get volunteers from our community to help assist in classrooms? Perhaps instead of having a parent educator that is a one-on-one, we have a volunteer family as they navigate what it looks like to work their way into settling into the school that they move to. And so there's a whole host of ways we can get more people in the community involved in this great opportunity to care for families from other countries.
I believe the Olympia School District is already a very welcoming place. It celebrates the diversity of the student population, and I believe any student coming from abroad, from another country, from another background, from a language, would be accepted and feel welcomed in this community. I think it would be important to get them the help they would need for language assistance and the teachers as well. And to Renee's point as well, make sure the paperwork is going home in the proper language. Thank you.
How will you, excuse me, how will you support students who are differently abled or non-traditional learners?
I'm a parent of one of those kiddos myself, and the challenge is real, right? Like, every student has their own individual needs and learning styles, and the teachers, I think, honestly, do their best to try to address the children that are in front of them. I think we need to make sure our teachers are educated in how to have an inclusive classroom setting, that lets students come in and be together with peers, and so that they're able to learn from each other. I think that it is important and vital, actually, that our students are exposed to the full range of folks who think differently, whose brains work differently, who have different experiences, because that's part of what makes all of us better people together, more well-rounded. I think, I'm going to end there.
Yeah, that's good. Yeah, this is a difficult one, especially as we're seeing funding continue to decrease around special education and students with disabilities and different learning styles. I taught a pull-out program for academically gifted kids called Pats several years ago in the district, where fifth grade, fourth grade, third grade, second grade would come in, provided the opportunity for these kids, where different types of learners, they were high performers. And so I would say, what are the ways in which we need to find opportunities like that for our students? And the good news is, there's a lot of ways. We're already doing that in the school district. And so one of the ways, I think, that we'd have to figure out how to help funding to provide some resources for these, for this group of students, is some private funding or partnerships with businesses. I know many business owners who would be elated to help with kids that have disabilities or needs in our schools, and I think that would be one way to help continue to fund these options as we see this budget shortfall.
Can I have the question repeated again, just to...
How will you support students who are differently abled or non-traditional learners?
I would support those students by supporting the teachers, and that's where we would get our feedback, is to see how they're doing, what additional support they need, if they need more PD, more support. It comes from speaking with the administrators and making sure that everyone is getting what they need to deliver that assistance to those students.
I'm also a parent of a differently, different learner, and he is an amazing child. And I think Olympia, and specifically McLean, because that's where he is at, is doing an excellent job really meeting him where he's at and allowing him to truly thrive. I think looking at the policies for IEPs and 504s is really important to make sure that those are consistent throughout the school district, and that students in similar situations are receiving similar access to needs and, for their needs, and to resources and tools. I also think that other students and classmates can also be a great resource. I know my son has great friends who are able to help him get through tough times, and I'm not saying we should put the burden on other students, but using that resource where he already has a friend who understands him, he also has his one-on-one who is intimately familiar with his needs. So I think allowing students to really ask for the things that they need and to really be able to provide them through funding is important.
What role do you see the board has in ensuring protections for undocumented students?
What role, one more time, as I'm...
What role do you see the board has in ensuring protections for undocumented students?
Yeah, again, I think this is where partnerships are critical. And I would say, gosh, I'm not even really sure what the board's direct role, but making sure that kids feel safe in their school by making sure that they're welcome. But also, we want to make sure we're in partnerships with local police as well. We're not trying to do anything that is not against the law. I mean, I haven't been asked this question before, so that's a great question. I want to create a safe school for all kids, whether you're documented, undocumented. But I wouldn't want to do things that are not against the law. And so it would be, yeah, be a partnership that way.
This is a new question for me as well. I mean, I would default to making sure that the schools feel safe and accepting for all students, full stop, regardless of nationality, immigration status, or anything like that. I don't have more of an answer on that. I'd have to look more into it and read more into it. I'm sorry that I don't know right now.
So ultimately, the board is tasked with creating a curriculum and helping with policies and procedures that are rolled out throughout the entire school district that follow the laws of Washington. So if I was to be on the board, that I would continue to follow the laws of Washington and the laws of the United States. That is an oath that we would all take if we were to be elected. But also, the heart at this is to make sure that students are being met where they're at, and to make sure that schools are safe and that students feel safe in the places that they're learning. We were just talking before this all started, how school is kind of like our kiddo's job, like equivalent to ours. They're there most of the day. So most of the day, and almost a second home for some students. I know that there is a child that I came across who felt that school was her safest place, and no matter what, school should be a safe place. So allowing the board to make sure our policies and education allows for that, so students can truly thrive, is very important.
To me, an undocumented child has the same right to an education that every other child that comes into our doors does. But specifically relevant to the board's role, we have a policy for the Olympia School District in regards to undocumented students and how to protect their educational rights. Office of Superintendent of Public Instruction has also reissued guidance, I believe, in January of this year. And so the OSD policy was most recently updated in the fall of 2024. And so I think it would be a good idea for the board to revisit that policy, to make sure it's aligned with the best practices coming out from OSPI. And then ultimately, we need to make sure the superintendent is making sure all staff are trained, because of course, a policy is just a document. The procedures and what actually gets done is where we actually live out those realities and protect our students.
What strategies do you support to address challenging student behaviors?
I'm going to sound like a broken record here, but I do default to the experts on this. I would trust our special education teachers. I would trust them to follow the 504s and IEPs. And if there were any concerns brought up, then I would dig deeper into it. But I trust the experts to do what they're experts in.
So ultimately, the experts will need some guidance, but as long as the IEPs and the 504s are being followed, that's what's important. But if they're not being followed, there needs to be an avenue for parents to bring those concerns forward so that they can be addressed in a productive way. The parents know their student the best, and the teachers know the student the best in the school setting. But together, the student and the parents collaborate, the parents and the teachers collaborate for the students so that they can be successful. So I would want to make sure that parents also feel that they're being heard, they know what works for their kiddo the best. I know that we have had some instances where we brought a concern to our son's teacher, and they were very receptive to the change, and were able to implement something else that was different. I think that the teachers also need continuing education on how to have those changes implemented and to really be able to support the students.
So challenging student behaviors in sort of that larger context of behavioral health generally is a giant statewide conversation right now. We are sort of wrestling through, what is the role of the school in regard to providing behavioral health services? In particular, the schools are not funded to provide behavioral health services like folks might want them to be able to do. And so I think what we need to do is be thinking about, we don't have the funding necessarily to continue to do what we have been doing. So how do we look for the new way forward? Because the students still how do we look for the new way forward? Because the students still come to us, the students still exhibit challenging behaviors, we still need to find the path. I think there is some interest, potentially, well, my interest, and I'm trying to interest other jurisdictions, in sort of cross-partnerships between the city, the county, the other school districts. How do we create a more regionalized approach to providing behavioral health service for our kiddos, so that we're able to get ahead of some of this higher acuity behavior that we're seeing within our schools?
Yep. No, you're good. Yeah, I think there needs to be a better balance in our schools between restorative practices and accountability. We can't just let behaviors that are not appropriate to continue on indefinitely without there being a level of accountability. So it's a partnership with the parents, it's a partnership with the teachers, it's a partnership with the principal and administration. And to make sure that we have the best practice to help kids account for some behaviors, we just need to say, oh, that's not okay to do. And then where there's difficulty, we need to find ways through this. As a district, we do a great job of some social, emotional teaching and education, and we need to continue to figure out ways to help kids understand who they are, their behaviors, their feelings, and express those in ways that allow behaviors to be helpful. But I would say again, and this is one of my keys in life, is relationships, having great relationships with kids. Kids are more likely to respect their elders if they have a relationship with that adult. And that's proven over time, it's proven in my own kids' lives and the kids I've worked with as well.
What will you do as a board member to support an equitable and inclusive environment in schools?
So number one, equity and inclusivity is very important to me, but I believe that the board has certain rules they need to follow, and the laws of Washington require that schools are a place where students feel safe. And I believe that we can make students really feel seen and heard through their school day. So I would hope that we will continue to enact policies and procedures to allow students to continue to feel safe, to feel seen, and to feel heard. I would like to have students to be able to have school groups where they have people that they look up to, have other volunteers from the community come in and showcase some of the great things that we have in Olympia. Olympia is a great place that has so many wonderful things that students can really benefit from. There's already certain things that come through, like a rolling book tour. I know recently, there was one about a gorilla that came to McLean. So I do think it's really great that we get those inclusive ideas out there.
And going to school board meetings is, last year, I've actually been really impressed at the thoughtfulness of this particular board and what they have done around requesting what's called disaggregated data, or looking at our students by much more than what you think of as like the five main census racial categories. They break down information for our students across a whole range of different categories, and that is so important because it lets us shed more light on where we have more work to do. And so I think that's something I would like to see continued here within the Olympia School Board and look for, then you have the follow-on, right? Like, what do you do to help address those disparities that you're seeing within the data that are calling them to them, calling them to your attention? But if you weren't looking, you wouldn't even know they were there, because they would disappear into the wash of data.
I would say that public education is the most equitable opportunity for a child in their life. They come from so many different backgrounds and so many different settings and so many different situations. And so we have an attendance issue in our district right now. We have about three-quarters of our students that reach, that come to school more than 90% of the time. So 25%, 77% are coming more than 99% of the time. And so we need to figure out how to reconnect with our students and our families and provide them, because when they get to school and they have an opportunity to connect with teachers and their peers and clubs that they want to be a part of, or supporting groups that they can support the things that they're struggling with, then that will be the key. And I would want to try to figure out ways in which we can improve attendance to help our schools continue to be equitable and inclusive.
I believe OSD does a good job of equity and inclusion currently, but I also agree with Renee on the point of disaggregated data. It is a good way for us to look at the numbers and see where our intent isn't actually meeting the impact we want, and to make sure we can go out there and rectify those issues with the students that are not being met and getting their needs met through the system we have in place.
I know I'm probably not supposed to ad lib, but these are really good questions, audience. Very impressed. Many taxpayers don't have children in school, and many of us are interested in better return of our community investment. How will you engage with this population?
That has been so much fun, out knocking on doors. So I have been actually kind of surprised, maybe I was naive, about how many times I've knocked on someone's door, and it's someone who's a voter. You know, like, they don't send you out to talk to, like, the people who don't vote. And they'll say, oh, I vote, but I don't usually vote in the school board race. And to me, that is such a good opportunity to ask a question, to engage, sort of why. And then, do you pay the taxes on this house? Are you interested in having a well-trained workforce that is going to be your future nurses, your future doctors, your future teachers, your future small business owners? The functioning of the school district within this community has such an oversized impact on how the overall function, everything that we do, really, when it comes into it. People need good workers. People need folks who have learned how to work successfully in teams, all these things that we can work on in K-12 and help increase our overall prosperity in our community in the future.
I apologize. Can you repeat it one more time for me?
Many taxpayers don't have children in school, and many of us are interested in a better return of our community investment. How will you engage with this population?
Yeah, again, the key is relationships. And as Renee is saying, the more that we can engage this group of folks, whether it's town hall meetings, or surveys, or all the ways that we can try to build more relationships with taxpayers to regrow trust, I think this is actually sadly the first time we've been a district that has always passed levies and has had no difficulty in supporting public education. These are the first conversations I've been having with families, saying, I think I'm gonna vote no, because based on the way that we see the school district going. So we need to figure out how to rebuild trust. We need to figure out how to regrow connections with our community and in that trust rebuilding. I think we'll get a chance to reengage some of these folks to feel like they're, they want to vote or want to support certain things.
I know this is cliche, but the children are the future. I mean, that investment in children is investing in more educated, more responsible adults and voters in the future. So that money is spent to making sure our community continues to thrive and grow with great community members and strong community.
You stole half my answer, Gil. So ultimately, I believe that speaking with everyone as best as I can is really important. We don't know what we don't know, right? So I think being able to address community members that don't have students is really important. And a lot of the people that have talked to me have said, why should I be voting in the school board? And I tell them exactly what we've all been talking about. You know, the students are our future. I really want our students to be educated. And educated doesn't mean they have to go to a four-year college. Education is in the trade schools, in theater, in arts, music, other ways. There are so many things out there that people can be educated on. And having a good foundation in the public school system is extremely important to build on that for future education and future jobs. And I think that those individuals who want to know more about why they should vote if they don't have kids leads, comes down to accountability and transparency. Their money is going towards supporting all of these resources and education for the students. So I think it's important that they learn that.
Are there ways to raise student enrollment and engagement that could be effective in our communities?
Yeah, again, it comes back to trust from the community. And unfortunately, one of the things that's happened over the last several years is that the school board and district in some ways has moved into more ideological focus instead of education first. We need to get back to education first as the highest priority for our schools. And in that, it's gonna provide opportunities for parents to trust that they're gonna send their kid into a school, and it's not gonna be ideological focused. There's a group of parents that we did a survey, it was representative of 135 students that have left the districts, and teachers as well. And we asked, why are you leaving the school district? And tell us, help us understand. And the number one reason why they're taking their students out of Olympia Schools is because of politics and ideology. St. Mike's is building a two-story building, because their enrollment has continued to grow. Parents are taking their students and getting them to other opportunities because they don't want politics and ideology to be the focus. We need to get back to education first and trust in our community.
Can I hear the question again?
Are there ways to raise student enrollment and engagement that could be effective in our communities?
I think showing the growth that the school district's having. I mean, we moved here specifically a few years ago for the school district, because we know how good it is. And I think the school district offers a lot of different opportunities across. There's different choice programs, there's different ALEs, and it helps pull people back in and give people opportunities that they wouldn't have in other districts. And I know people come here, like we did, for the school district.
Allowing families to really be heard on why they're leaving the school district is important. I think there's more to the story on why individuals are leaving as well. I know that there's a family that was contemplating sending their son to private schools, given the large class sizes, and the way that they believed that their students' needs and access to resources were not being met. So I do believe that there are other things that are causing families to leave the school district as well. Some of it's just moving. Like, my partner and I, we decided to move from the other side of the state to Olympia, and we chose Olympia because of the schools. She and I were very specific on the area we wanted to live in and the opportunities that Olympia has. I think that there are a lot of parents out there that wish there was more transparency, especially from the school board, and more accountability. And that's something that I would want to continue to champion going forward. And I think that there's, again, more to the story of why people are leaving, but I would want to hear from those other opinions.
I have a lot. I'm not gonna make it in a minute. Hit me up afterwards if you want more complete thoughts. So I think one thing I haven't heard addressed is the structural nature of some of our challenge here. If you go back and look at Thurston County from 2010 to 2020, the total number, or percentage of households with children declined. At the same time, the county was growing. We are becoming an older community. We are becoming a community of households without children or single-family, single individual households. That's a structural challenge, right? You have fewer young people, you have declining birth rates. That means you're ultimately going to have fewer children available in the pool. That said, some of what Ryan said is true as well. We're also having students that we could be getting that are choosing not to come with us. I think some of that can be cracked up to the communication challenge. The communication challenge is real with this school district. They completed a communication audit over the last year that calls out a whole lot of findings that could go, I think, if we implement and move forward, to improve that particular situation.
Well, we're just about out of time, and so we're gonna use our remaining time to give each candidate another minute for their closing statements. And we'll start with Gilbert.
Okay. I wanna look at your cheat sheet here. Well, thank you all for coming. I really appreciate you guys being involved in the community and coming out here and asking us these great questions. I appreciate having the opportunity to answer them in my concise manner. I'm gonna reiterate my points, is I'm running on impact over intense. I believe my background as a data analyst will help find the important impact that are hitting our students and making sure that we're putting our funding in that point. Additionally, I believe that diversity is our strength and that everyone should be included in our school district. And I also believe in empowering educators. They are the backbone of our schools. They are how this stuff gets done. They are the experts, and I trust them. Thank you. And if you have any other questions for me, I have an email, or I'll be around if you want to ask questions. I've been loving talking to people throughout this whole process. Thank you.
Ultimately, I want to make Olympia more accessible, more transparent, and more accountable. But really, my drive is to keep the students at the focus. I want to be able to meet the students where they're at and to really allow them to truly thrive, not only in schools, but also in the community when they're full-grown humans. I think school is a great starting point, and we have so many opportunities for our students to really thrive. I believe inclusivity is not just what everyone thinks about the word inclusivity. That includes all students with learning disabilities or different ways of learning, and also students who don't have learning disabilities. We really need to look at what works for each student if we can, and to really allow them to get access to those tools and resources to really thrive and to be the best students that they can be, so that when they are full-grown humans, they are there and they're educated. I would love to talk to more of you when there's more time. Please reach out. Thank you.
So to echo everyone else, thank you all for coming out tonight. It's a big investment in your time and attention to come and be here and listen to all of us talk. I think overall, at least for me, I'm experiencing a lot of uncertainty right now. There's a lot of uncertainty going into 2026 with the state budget. We know revenues are continuing to decline, so there's probably not a large investment coming in our K-12 system. And there's a lot of stuff going on federally. This is a challenging time, and I think challenging times call for calm and thoughtful leadership, someone who brings kind of a pragmatic presence and has been there before. We didn't get a chance to get into my background a lot, but I was 10 years with the Department of Health, and three of those were during the COVID pandemic, where I was running meetings during times of really high anxiety and stress and a lot of contention. I've been there. Unfortunately, school board meetings can sometimes be like that, and I would like to be in the room to help keep things calm and at a reasonable keel, and I appreciate your consideration.
Yes, thank you so much for coming and being here and for everybody putting on this event. I think I'd just start by asking, do you want more of the same? I was really hopeful going into this that I would be able to move the needle on voters. We have about 50,000 or so available votes, and only about 17,000, 18,000 voted in the primary. 33,000 people got a ballot in our community, and they didn't vote. And we live in a city where if you don't get the right endorsements, then you don't win an election. I was just more hopeful that I could get more people to vote and say, hey, there's been so many conversations I've had around concerns and around ideology and politics. And this is nonpartisan race, and Renee and Gil have all the endorsements, and they're most likely gonna win. We know that. We knew that from the start. And I hope that for the 33,000 people out there, that you'd be willing to at least say, hey, do we just want that continued same voice, same city council voice, same school board voice? And if that's the case, then they're gonna be great candidates. I like them both. They seem really nice. But if you want change, I'd love your vote.
We encourage you to be a voter in the upcoming election on November 4. Every vote counts. Ballots will be mailed out around October 15, and you may register to vote right up until election day. The League of Women Voters of Thurston County is a nonprofit, nonpartisan organization that encourages all citizens to be informed active participants at government. The League works to increase understanding of major public policy issues and influences public policy through education and advocacy. Our sincere thanks go to TC Media for their partnership in producing this forum and also for years of collaboration with the League. TC Media is a nonprofit organization dedicated to making media production accessible to the community. We're grateful to Olympia Timberland Library, our host for this series of candidate forums for local offices that significantly influences the way our community works. Thank you to the NAACP for their sponsorship, as we work toward a community, state, and nation, where equity and equality for all become the foundation for a strong, vibrant democracy. Thank you to the candidates for taking time to be here this evening. We believe when candidates make themselves available to the public, it promotes a healthy democracy here in Thurston County. We also want to thank all of the volunteers who are here this evening. We could not have pulled this off without them. Finally, thanks to all of you who attended both in person and online. Have a great rest of your evening.